Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 28th work session of the Penfield Planning Board. We will begin the meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks, everyone, for coming. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Hetzke.
Hetzke here.
Aiken.
Aiken here.
Kenauer.
Kenauer here.
Tidings.
Tidings here.
Sangster.
Sangster here.
Wyser.
Wyser here.
Prinzing.
Prinzing here.
Gray.
Here.
All right. We have minutes from the March 14th meeting. Hopefully, everyone's had an opportunity to review them. Can I entertain a motion to approve?
Tidings do approve.
I'll second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right. We have two tabled applications. Doug, would you like to go down the agenda?
All right. Starting with tabled application number one, 1676 Penfield Road, Flower City Arcade. So we still have received nothing new, and I had no new communications with the applicant. At this point, the application was submitted in March of 2023. The public hearing was in April of 2023. The last correspondence the board had with the applicant was the resolution we sent, tabling resolution we sent in October of 2023. Given the length of time since the last communication, we wanted to bring up with the board the possibility of sending the applicant correspondence, letting them know that the board is interested in seeing if they're interested in submitting any new information or supplemental materials for the board's review and potentially putting a clock on that.
Good.
With the possible outcome being if they are interested, they could either withdraw their application, submit new information, otherwise look at potentially getting a denial without prejudice, meaning they could reapply again just due to inaction.
I brought that up the last meeting, so yeah, I'm going to make the motion to do that, and we'll give them, you know, the 60 days, send a letter.
Yeah, 60 days, that would be 60 business days excluding holidays and weekends, so that would put them, give them opportunity to submit new information until the end of June for potentially action at the June work session.
Yeah, give them a little bit more time.
That's fair.
Withdraw, so I'll make that motion.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Hetzke.
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Kenauer.
Kenauer, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
I had a quick question on that. They could also, if they wanted to, just say that they're withdrawing?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it gives them the opportunity. At this point, it's been close to six months since we've had any, we had a pretty lengthy discussion with them in September of 2023 when we issued a pretty lengthy tabling resolution with all of the items that the board was looking for to be able to render a decision for them.
Yeah. It probably wouldn't make any difference if they withdrew versus us having to do a denial.
Yeah, yeah. It also gives them a long possibility, you know, maybe they have engaged with an engineer at this point. We just don't know. And it gives them an opportunity to say, hey, we're still interested in moving forward with this project. We'll have new plans, supplemental information, a photometric plan, something by the deadline. Okay?
All right. Item two.
All right. Tabled application number two, 2324 Fairport Nine Mile Point Road, meaningful life psychiatry. So we do have the applicants in the audience. We have gone back and forth.
Yeah. Do the two of you want to come up to, so work session and you're what we're covering tonight, at least try to figure out how to move to the next step? Doug, go ahead, continue.
Okay. Yeah, so we just, we had sent a tabling resolution at the end of the public hearing the last meeting. I think the biggest concern is over making sure that there is sufficient parking for the business, so I think the board was interested in finding out a little bit more about the scope of the practice.
Larry Heininger from Marcus and Associates. So with me here is Dr. Vanessa Kamerek. And in the last 48 hours, she said, we are going to use the garage for storage, not for an exercise room. That reduced the usable square footage, the habitable space to 1,104 square feet and 1.5 spaces per 200 square. The parking requirement is 8.28. And I understand that the board is allowed, has the capability of allowing a 20% reduction to, which would then be 6.62 rounded to seven, which is what we had on the plans earlier this month. Dr. Kamerek has also indicated that, including yourself, there are three doctors. So three doctors, one patient per, total six, multiple patients would be seven. If the board feels that a few more spaces would be prudent, double stacked, then looking more closely at this, I would go with spaces 10 and 11, which are the ones closest to the building because there's a 36-inch maple tree that we've got to mobilize an arborist for at least two of the trees. And you might as well get rid of a 36-inch maple that's way too close to the house, soft maple. And then those would be the logical spaces. And that would give you then a total of nine, which if you're using the full 8.28, you're in the ballpark. And that's it.
Okay. So the, I believe that one of the things that threw the board during the public hearing was the description of the intent to have, like, group therapy sessions with eight or 10 people. And if we're looking at seven parking spots, unless they carpool, which, you know, if they're families or something, I don't know, but that we're looking for a little bit more detailed explanation on that.
Yeah. So the maximum number of participants that we would ever envision having at one time would be eight, maybe up to 10. Now, if we have nine spaces, that would totally be doable, eight participants, one therapist. That's perfect. If the board would allow for the, like, would approve the double-stacked parking option up to 11 spaces, that would be great, and that would be sufficient. But I could make do with nine as well. Does that provide a bit more clarity?
I think so. I also went on your website, and you have, there's four doctors on the, is one of them leaving?
Yep. Dr. Popa, today is actually her last day, so I'll be removing her from the website.
Wow.
And our admin is fully remote. She's not onsite.
Okay.
Just the three of us.
How's everybody else feeling about this? I mean, the double-stack parking, I, I'm not sure how I come down on that. I don't like to be the guy that says, we've never done that before, and we're never going to do it. That said, buildings change use over time. And while the double-stack parking may work fine for your operation if you sell it in 15 years and/or move to a much larger location because your practice has expanded and you're, you know, taking over Rochester General Hospital or something, what will that become in now all of a sudden those stacked parking spots are, become a sticky wicket of sorts for us? That said, I personally don't know how, I don't have a strong opinion one way or another on that. What's everybody else's feelings? Kelly?
I'm in the same.
Put you on the spot.
No, you didn't. I'm in the same boat as you because of exactly the reason why you said, what happens if your practice just blows it out of the water and you need to go to a new space, you know, then what happens? It's, I don't know.
Can I add anything?
Sure.
Well, different use, but I designed Rick Dorsel's Lexus, and they were triple-stacked, but obviously there's a car jockey to move cars. When I worked at Passaro down on Liberty Pole Way, we had to double-stack because there wasn't enough parking, so if you get out, you had to go find somebody to move their car or vice versa. What I would think, you know, if this was a small law practice or some CPAs, there probably wouldn't be more than three or four cars in the lot because they each have a bedroom and a break room and a kitchen, and this is a three-bedroom house.
Right.
That'd be the end of that. So I think that anyone moving, looking down the road, anyone moving in there, if there was still double-stacked, would be, this is for employees so that your visitors can, and for eight years, your visitors have a place to park. Now, for eight years, Marcus and Associates was the greatest office in the world. We were on the corner of Park and Berkeley, right above Giants and the Frog Pond. And, you know, if I got there in the morning, no problem parking behind the building.
Right.
Don't show up at noon trying to find a place to park. But I could never, in eight years, did I ever have to go to a client's office. I could say, come down for breakfast, come down for early or late lunch, or come down at 3:30, we'll go over your plans, and then we'll go over to the magpie and finish out the day. So that was, let's say, a challenging parking, but we were able to work.
You worked it out.
So the other thing is, in 15 years, I got to imagine that the place next door to the north is going to be built out, and they'll be parking in the backyard. You know, because you said someone's already contacted you, that they might want to buy your building.
The parcel that's currently for sale.
Next door?
Yeah.
Right. So that could happen a lot sooner, and I'm actually thinking these overflow spaces or these double-stack spaces, I should change my asphalt spec to be putting something in that's more of a driveway and less of a road so that when it gets torn out in two or three years, it's not a waste of materials.
Right.
And what's going to park there is a car, not a truck or something substantial. So that's kind of my thought on it is, it'd be great if the building had a 70-foot setback, but it doesn't.
Mm-hmm.
Because if it did, then we could add four more spaces and stuff like that. And I also, when I was talking to Doug the other day, said, you know, there's room to parallel park three cars on Fairport Nine Mile Point on the frontage. I would not advise that by any stretch of the imagination.
Nope.
You would want to be pointing north so that you didn't have to walk across the street.
Correct.
But.
But then you're getting out on the travel lane.
You're getting out on the travel lane, but if you get across on the other lane, then you've got to cross with people coming down a hill, going down a slope. So.
Either way, that's.
It's a not good situation.
Kind of a nonstarter. We really don't want people parking on.
You look at all these things and say, okay, now that's a really dumb idea. We can't, we can't do that. Whether or not the whole garage needs to be used as storage, and Vanessa can park her car in the garage because it's a two-bay garage, you know, that might work, too. But it's more the convenience over patients that when they get there, they've got a place to park.
Right. What's to stop someone from taking the first spot and leaving the one in completely open? You know, I guess the problem that I have is your days are fluid, and you don't necessarily have, you know, a set number of the exact same amount of patients every single day. So when people are coming in parking, how are they supposed to know where to park and what's going to allow them to say, okay? Because I got to be honest, if I'm pulling in and I see it's double-stacked, I'm just going to stop at that first spot. I'm not going to pull through.
You're one of those people.
Yes, I am. Don't get me trapped anywhere.
The first people in would be the docs.
Okay.
Okay? I mean, they're coming to work and, you know, let's say your first patient shows up at nine o'clock, you're coming to work by 8:30 to be ready for your patient. You're going to be parking in the double stack. And you know who's coming in on your ledger, your admin is telling you who's coming in, how long you're staying, and what docs are in the building.
You just got to make sure Terry's not one of your patients because.
I'll park on the outside.
You'll get there way early.
Yeah.
I can't get boxed in. This is an emergency, I got to go.
Yes.
Somebody don't call me.
What are your thoughts on this?
I was just looking for another, like, alternative that you guys might be able to come up with. I'm not a big fan of double stacking, so, I mean, you guys got anything else that might be workable?
Fewer docs and fewer patients, then I don't know whether economically it makes sense.
Smaller therapy groups?
Um, yeah, we really, so what would be, it does, that would, like, present some significant financial, like, burdens if we are doing multiple groups. That's just so much more staffing hours per, you know, participants. And yeah, there's also something pretty powerful about having multiple people involved in a group therapy session, multiple points of view. Yeah, there's a lot of reasons why we were really hoping to be able to have these spaces.
Let me ask you that question. How often do you do the therapy groups? Is it one every day, late afternoon, once a week?
Once a week, possibly, maybe twice a week.
Do the other therapists see patients while you're doing group therapy?
We could make it so that, most likely, the group therapy will be on an evening or a time that's not typically very busy. So we could, you know, if we only have eight spots to work with, we could just make it a policy that, you know, those are the hours that we save for the group therapy.
Bob?
Thoughts? Yeah. The point about a future occupant of the building, so if this practice left and, let's say, a similar practice went into this building, would they require a conditional use permit? Would they have to go through the process again?
Typically, no.
No.
So this is the business, non-retail district. Most of the uses for this area are service-oriented or professional offices. So any similar professional office, conditionally permitted uses, I think, would be something like small restaurants or cafes. Have to look it up. I don't know them all off the top of my head.
My thought was, you know.
Something like that.
If there was a future new applicant and there wasn't any kind of new permitting process, then they may not realize, you know, what the situation is.
Right.
And that they're limited. Whereas if they went to town, they'd have to go through.
Could we do something like a conditional use permit so that if, in the event that that happened, they would have to come back?
So they technically would probably, they would come to the building department for a change, for a change of operator anytime a business operator.
Change of use operator.
They would get a change of operation or change of operator permit just because a fire marshal would want to do a new fire inspection, things like that, as part of it. So when they do that, they would likely review the parking based on what the new operator would be doing with the space. Or they would be, you know, looking at it based on, you know, if somebody else came in and they wanted to make interior changes, they would need a building permit for that, and they would review it as part of that as well.
Yeah, and I can see, you know, for the double stacking, it's, what is it, four spots? So it's not huge, but I can also see where there may be a logistics issue with the office, people pulling in, and then other people getting blocked. If there's three doctors there and that fourth place is open, someone could park in there and then get blocked. So there's, you know, the whole.
True. That said, those things, it's not like we have 50 spots or.
Right.
You know, there's a lot of churches that have stacked parking and a lot more than two cars. You know, you get in line to go to mass, and there's 10 cars blocking you in. I can certainly see where it, at this scale, by the second time a client is going to the practice, they're going to know the drill, essentially. And I'm thinking they would work things out to make it practical.
I don't know if you could, if it would do any good, you could, for those stacked spots, you could hash those spots where people would see, you know, I guess I'm not supposed to park there.
You mean unless there's a car in front of me?
If people drove in and, let's say, two of the doctors were there, and then maybe the third and fourth stacked was open, they would see that it was hashed, and they may realize, I'm not supposed to park there.
Yeah. We could also, we could do that. We could also put a small sign in front of those spaces that indicate this is employee parking. And also, when appointments are made, and most everybody here is on my chart, but your admin.
You could almost be assigned a spot.
Well, you can send out a note that's got a little map of your parking lot and say, park on the right, park here.
Right.
Okay? These spaces are, and unless you're having the group session with only three docs and one patient, you're only going to have six, seven people.
Correct.
So you're not going to have a problem unless it's the group session.
Right.
You know, maybe.
And then the group session's getting out at the same time. So, hey, Bob, you blocked me in, you know.
Get out.
Yeah, and let's go, you know? Dinner's waiting.
Yeah, those stacked ones that are, that could be blocked, you know, you could double line those or do something. It's not going to prevent it. Even a sign's not going to prevent it because there'll still be people that will park there.
Yeah, well, I guess, there's one building.
Yeah.
One practice. It's not like I went into Wegmans and somehow I'm blocked in.
Well, that's my point.
And I got to go find.
It's a handful of folks. It's not a lot of people.
Go back in and say, who drives the?
Same folks every, every week, so.
Good question. The fire marshal though, I mean, what if there was a, you know?
So the fire marshal and the fire department wouldn't be pulling any vehicles into the parking lot anyway. The hydrants are on the west side of 250, so they'd likely be lining up along the west side of 250 near the hydrant. So I think the closest hydrant at.
Actually, there's just north on our side.
On your side as well? Okay.
On the east side.
But they'd be pulling up along the shoulder.
They'd be pulling up along the shoulder. They wouldn't pull into the parking lots too, not deep enough. It would be a challenge with, even without vehicles, it'd be a challenge to pull in, K-turn a truck and get it back out.
That's, yeah, that's my point.
And there's the, I guess there's a possibility with the lot to the north being for sale, somebody could come knocking on the door.
The bus stop is on our side to the north. Hydrants might be on the west side.
Yep. But, you know, it doesn't make a difference for the fire department that are going to connect to whatever the nearest one is and run hose across the street.
Are there any safety issues with double parked that the fire marshal is saying just from having a car blocked?
He hasn't, I haven't heard anything on that from them specifically with regards to this plan. No, yeah.
Want to ask him?
We can. We can ask the fire marshal.
You know, to that, I mean, even EMS, you know, whatever you need in the ambulance to go there for some reason, so many, yeah, the ambulance would pull in. They have room to jack around in there to get to the building with the double park and stuff?
So, I mean, the driving area is what, roughly 36 by 24, not including the spaces? So just that, that open area?
24 foot wide.
Yeah.
They would just pull in, they would pull in straight and get the person in the ambulance, and then they'd be backing out.
Yeah, they would just back out.
Lights and sirens.
Or they back in.
I mean, they'd K-turn if they had the space. If there wasn't people in the parking spaces, they would K-turn and get out, but yeah, otherwise they would just back out and it'd be fine with their emergency lights.
So you can see the trees, why they would come down.
Yeah.
You'd be leaving the two northernmost trees, correct?
Yes. That's why, when I looked at this, I said.
So just those three trees in the middle there?
There's the two that have to come down, and then the southern one, while Rich Smith or some other arborist is there, take it down. Because why would you want a 36-inch silver maple that close to your house? Especially with the prevailing winds coming from the west.
What's engineering say?
I know it wasn't their favorite, but they didn't provide any definitive issues with it. Most of their concerns were logistical and not engineering-related. It was, their concerns were, what if a doctor's kit has an emergency and they need to leave? Do they drive out over the grass because there's no curb shoulder on 250? Or do they ask somebody to move? That was really the concern that they had, at least that they expressed to me. I can't speak for the engineering department as a whole, so I don't know if they have any other issues, but that's something I can certainly ask.
I don't, if the fire marshal, I think we should probably ask him, because I, but I think that's my only concern. If they didn't, if they told me right now, like, geez, don't have a problem with that, chance of us pulling in, no, and we'd make it work, I don't think I'd have any other issues with this double park thing, but I think it's important. I think we should maybe throw it out there to them. Just to ask them, if he says, no, you guys do what you got to do. I think, you know, I'd welcome them other than that, I think. We can live with it.
Okay. Bob?
Yeah, I think the fire marshal was important, get his sign off if it looks doable. And then to do it, again, it's not a real huge lot, and the immediate burden's going to be on the applicant if there is an issue.
Right.
And, you know, in the future, just if there's a change in the use of that, that through, you know, whatever process, change in ownership, that it's clearly, I guess, communicated that there's a limitation, that there's a issue, could be an issue.
Yeah, like I said, any change of use would likely be reviewed in the building and zoning department.
Okay.
Part of that. And once it's established, you know, any new owner theoretically, if they're taking a look at the property and it's for sale, they'll be apprised of what the parking situation is and whether that works for them.
Kelly?
I agree, yeah.
Okay.
The fire marshal is one of the signatures on the plan.
Yeah, but we don't, we don't want to go through a whole process and then run into an issue with the fire marshal.
I'd rather.
Ask.
I don't either.
Prior to. All right. So I'm in agreement with all of you. Terry, I think it's a good idea to get the fire marshal's opinion on this. Terry, I think it's a, a good idea to get the fire marshal's opinion on this. I think that, you know, pragmatically speaking, you can work out the stacked parking in this situation. The fact that ultimately we want rear access anyway and, you know, I guess it's possible that this never even occurs. If somebody comes in, wants the property to the north and offers you enough, everything's for sale, right? So it could turn into something that's combining two lots and different than this anyway. Not that that's, I don't know anything about that, just for the record, but while we're trying to do our best to plan for the future, there's no real way of knowing exactly what's going to happen. And I do think that they could work out the stacked parking. So we can table this, get feedback from the fire marshal and any other interested, involved agencies and, and departments that, that want to weigh in. Have we gotten everything back that we've asked for so far?
Yes, yep.
Okay, and this is newly submitted, so I'd say, why don't we start preparing a, a resolution?
Okay, yep, I can start a draft of a resolution for you.
Sure.
So hopefully we can get this approved and they can get on their way at the next meeting.
What's the date of the next meeting?
It'd be the second Thursday in April, so, the 11th, I believe.
Okay.
Peter, do you have any major issues with what you've seen?
No, I do have a question though, just as I think about this in the future. Where is the, like, for the parking in the rear, is that, is that a condition of like rezoning?
Correct, yeah.
And then where is the, where is it contemplated that the access would be off of, off of 250?
So there's two contemplated accesses. One is continuing with the business plaza to the north, so connecting in just south of Jeremias. The second was having the primary access for that group of BNR zone properties to come out directly across from New Wickham Drive. Whether that becomes signalized in the future or just remains a controlled four-way intersection.
And so do, do those, like, is there something in a plan somewhere that when it was rezoned to give people some notice of that? Because I just think about, like, you know, they're going to want that to be a little bit more, you know, sturdy asphalt.
I think I can take, I can take a look back. I know that rezoning...
It's post-LuAnt, isn't it?
Huh?
I think it's post-LuAnt.
It was post-LuAnt, so they did reference the 1996 LuAnt Plan, Land Use Access Management Plan for the 250-441 corridor, as well as the 250-441 overlay. I believe as part of the rezoning, there was a map that was drafted that showed conceptual layout of how they would like it to look. I haven't been able to find that. It's something I was looking for, just because I wanted to be able to reference it as well.
Yeah, I just, I ask that just because to make sure it's going to work eventually that it's, that, you know...
That, that's ultimately the intention, you know, this lot's pretty far south. There are, I believe, four lots, five lots in between her and, or four lots in between where Jeremias, and that is, I do know, 2316, we had had, we have had a previous planning board application on the vacant lot directly to the north. So whether we get one again, and that provides a potential connection point, I believe the lot directly to the north of that, 2300, is the one that is the most likely candidate for being able to come out directly across from New Wickham Drive. And as far as I'm aware, that's still a single-family residence.
Yeah. Do you know who the owner is of that larger parcel that you're highlighting right now?
The owner of record we have is Michael and Christine Potter. And I believe the two directly to the north of that are owned by a investment firm and used as rentals, as far as I'm aware.
Because if, if you're lining up with New Wickham Drive, you're, you're kind of running down a common lot line, but mostly skewed to the northern lot.
Right.
So that person would need to sell you some land or think it was advantageous to have a different highway access there.
I mean, that was part of the overall long-term plan, was the intention was that these would most likely convert out of residential, just given Route 250's a road with 27, 28,000, uh, 27, 28,000 average daily traffic and a 45 mile per hour speed limit.
Right. I mean, this, this Potter property, it looks like it's got a few things going on, like possibly an old barn or car burn.
Yep. Okay, somebody want to move to table?
I'll move to table.
And begin preparation of an approval resolution?
I'll second.
Hetzke?
Hetzke, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Knauer?
Knauer, aye.
Tidy?
Tidy's aye.
All right.
All the new business ad for you tonight.
Okay, thank you everyone for coming. We will adjourn.